Special meeting in order, if you'll please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening to everyone, welcome to this special meeting. We got a few items on the agenda that we need to take care of. The first item is item A, Dead Lakes Park. Mr. Hammond?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. On Dead Lakes Park, we're probably about two or three weeks out from being able to reopen. And we want to get permission from the board to let the TDC run that and manage that and to set the rates. We may have several tiered rates because we're gonna have some gravity sewer now and some longer-term rentals potentially for some of these workers. But if we could turn that over to the TDC, let them set the rates and let them purchase whatever operating system that we need for... We want to go to a cashless system, only credit card or check, but mainly credit card. So whatever system, they've got two or three options, I think, but it'll be under the bid limit, but we want to let them handle that through the TDC if that's the board wishes.
Alright, thanks sir. Any questions, our board members? Mr. Hammond? Yes, sir, you have four?
Thanks, sir. I've, you might say, been in charge of that park for the last eight years. And when I first got it, it was in shambles, we'll just be truthful about it. Took two debities, about three months to get the riffraffs all ran out. Taxpayers was having to foot the bill. Today, it pays its own way. Not one penny of tax dollars from the people go to that park. It has enough, it pays its light bill, it pays its maintenance bills, it pays whatever. It's self-sufficient and it's got a little bit of money now with us. We haven't been bringing any revenue here because of this hurricane, but we did have enough in reserves to try to hold us to possibly, we can get by to we get going again. But I think that's a good suggestion. I've had eight years of it and I probably wasn't enough. Day went by that I'm not getting a call over this or that. Can you make exceptions here? Can you do this? Can you do that? And we need to turn it under and put it strictly a cash credit card system. And let the TDC set the rates because in the north end of the county, that park is the only park, our only TDC revenue, to my knowledge. That's the only thing up there that paid any TDC. Pays sales tax, pays the TDC their bid tax. So I've enjoyed it, but it has got tiresome. And I'm ready to let somebody else drive the bus awhile on that. So turn it over to TDC. I'm one of them sent for that.
Okay, thanks, sir. Any other Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Ross?
So, TDC's gonna take care of the restroom, cleaning, and all the other ins and outs on that part of it?
Yes, their crews will do the maintenance and take care of it. Obviously, they'll have to have some help from time to time from our maintenance crew when it's a little more in-depth, but they'll do just as they do at White City and some of the other parks, that they'll keep it clean and they'll take care of it from there.
Yes, sir.
I need to think, Mr. Chairman, I could be...
Yes, sir.
This is the... Wish I'd had a little heads up on this. Now, we maintain up there, and I would like to... There was a trailer up there, it's no longer there, but that's where our work crews, we have a workshop up there. And Mr. Cothran, I was in that a few days back and it looks like all it needs is a roof. Walls look like they were in pretty good shape. And I hope we're not intending to... We need a place in the north end of the county for the work crews.
It's our intention to...
To keep that.
Keep that, yes, sir.
Alright, now, one other thing, is, will TDC just manage this park or they gonna manage all the parks in the county? I know, what's, is it this, this park?
Well, as you know, they manage most parks now, as far as...
Well, this is the only one that generates any revenue.
That's correct.
At this time.
That's correct.
Hopefully we get some more. Okay.
Primarily, they run in Beacon Hill and Honeyville for rentals and things to that nature from time to time, but we've just add this to it. This will be the only one that would actually be charging for overnight stays like RVs, but...
There you go. We could've made a lot of... But the maintenance building, we're gonna put a roof back on that building where our work crews will have a place for their equipment. Are we good there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, that's it, I'm through now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, you need a vote on that?
Yep. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, I got a motion by Commissioner Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Crone, any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh. I understand. Item B, Right-of-Entry Program.
Right-of-Entry Program, this is, has been going on for months and somewhat disappointing, but we're here to the last month, basically, and DOT has informed us as of yesterday that they are, or, excuse me, as of Monday, that they are not going to pick up the bill for right-of-entry on private property for the county. We've been pre-approved by FEMA and we've been pre-approved by VEM. So it's my suggestion, we have thirty-something applicants so far. It'd be my suggestion that we end applications today, that on a case-by-case basis, the ones that are eligible or deemed eligible that Mr. Cothran could go through and with county labor, and in the case if we have to cut trees with contractor like Mr. Hunter, on a case-by-case basis, go through and fulfill these that we can, we'll still turn in for reimbursement. But, you know, it's not guaranteed that we'll get it back. We could get back a hundred percent, we could get back eighty-seven and a half percent, but DOT's not gonna foot the bill. So for us to go through one of the two state contractors, either Esprit or DRC, and then have their inspectors, it would add a lot to the bill. So it'd be my suggestion that we do that and then go forward. In addition to that, some of these trees that they are not agreeing to cut that could fall on county roads and then knock out the power and whatnot are dangerous trees, I'd like Mr. Cothran, on a case-by-case basis, to be able to cut those as well. And we would try to fill this in the next thirty days if at all possible.
Okay. Alright, Commissioner Ross?
I have a question on that. Mr. Hammond, would you... Everyone pretty much in the county knows that Friday is it.
That's correct.
Could we just put this in? We have got two more days. You said you want to cut off applications. The day's, nothing will happen on Wednesday. They got two more days. Or just let it go in with that? You want to cut it off now?
You want to go to Friday?
See, I just brought a bunch of applications down from Little Hetcha. They may have more there.
It's up to the board when you want to cut it off. We really need, in order to be able to participate in the haul-off, we need to get it done in the next thirty days. The board, the board can set the date, and if you want to go forward with this, with us doing it, then it can be Friday.
Well, I can speak for the others, but I'd be fine with Friday. I don't think we're gonna get that anymore anyway.
Friday's fine with me if you want.
That's on the applications.
Alright. So I entertain a motion that we cut off the right-of-entry program.
I'll make that motion.
Application is Friday.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Alright, motion by Commissioner McDane?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this right-of-entry program? Second, uh, Mr. Rich. Anyone in the public on this? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, that sets the date. If you could, if we could have a motion for county to do this work that we can do, that we will go out on the tree cutting with someone like Mr. Hunter or whatever, I think you've already talked to Kim Hunter, to... Because we're not capable of cutting the trees, it's too dangerous for us to do that. We need a professional to do that. But on a case-by-case basis, as the Public Works Director so fit, so seized fit, excuse me, to move forward on this and try to get them done within, by April fifteenth would be our goal, to be through with these by April fifteenth.
Alright, so you need a motion to allow county workers to do this work? So moved.
Are you gonna include Kim in that contract with Kim Hunter? Are you... To cut any trees?
Well...
I find it with that, him and others just need to...
Okay, I mean, yeah. That's fine, okay.
Leave it up to someone along with Kim.
That's fine.
workload is too much to handle, I might have to reach out to somebody else.
Oh, I see. I just, you know, we don't have anybody...
We've already talked to him, he's the only local professional tree cutter that I'm aware of, but we're not gonna go through the process, we don't have enough time to go through the process. So we're just gonna do it on a case-by-case, but just like he said, if we have others and he can't get through in the timely manner, we'll do whatever we can to fulfill these requests. I know you've got a stack, I don't expect there to be a tremendous number. We've got thirty-one, I think, in hand.
I've got thirteen here.
We've got thirteen.
Probably seven of them might, or may not be as many as five, it's legit.
That's right. Now, what I intend to do on, since y'all gave me the authority to approve these, if these are vacant lots, unless it's something that's gonna fall on a neighboring house or on a county road or a power line, we're not gonna claim vacant lots. It's gonna be for houses, it's gonna be for folks that legitimately can't afford to take care for themselves. Elderly, disabled, homes is our intent. Not, we had some that were just vacant lots that I don't, unless Mr. Cothran sees it differently, that I wouldn't approve to do the vacant lots.
Alright, go ahead, Mr. Ross.
Please, Mr. Chairman. So this is right-of-entry on private property. I guess my question is, what about some of the easements that the county has on some of these ditches and other things? Are we gonna be able to, are we gonna do a pretty much the same thing as we have to?
Yes, sir. And again, we've argued with, it's gotten better, but we've argued with DOT and some of the inspectors, the, a lot of these things they're arguing about for the cleaning trees are on county right-of-way, or at least partially on county right-of-way. So we don't need rights of entry to cut those. So again, on a case-by-case basis, when Mr. Cothran is driving down Long Avenue and he sees a big tree, I saw one this morning actually on Garrison Avenue at the post office, the entire top is about to fall out, and again, it's either gonna knock out the power line or it's gonna fall in the road, we're gonna cut that tree or have it cut. Those type of things are, and we're not gonna do a right-of-entry because it's on our right-of-way or it's on the city right-of-way. So, but for, we've gone through the process, it's been five months, but we've got FEMA approval and Department of Emergency Management approval, but DOT's tired of paying the bill and I don't blame them. I hate that we've gone through this process and they're not gonna do it now, but I think we can fulfill the needs of the ones who've signed up and been waiting patiently to get this debris out. It's not gonna, it's not gonna be a perfect job, but it's gonna be something that will solve the problem for these folks who've been waiting.
Some of these are city.
Yes, sir. Yes, it's county-wide, that's right.
Both municipalities and county. Is that clear? Okay. I put a motion, I don't know if it was about a second.
Alright, we need, we got a motion by Commissioner McDane, we need a second.
So moved.
Alright, second by Commissioner Rogers. Alright, any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public on this? Alright, any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh. Alright, Hammond, still we got the floor, DOT, road work?
Roads. I think first of all, again, I talked to most of you about this, we've been expecting what happened the day before yesterday for a while. They're gonna get somebody killed with that thing, red light in Highland View. It's, one, it's aggravating people because of the timeliness, but they had a wreck on top of the bridge the day before yesterday, and it could've been a disaster. But the gist is, when you top that bridge at forty-five miles an hour and there's somebody dead stopped right on the other side, it's just a recipe. And they've had several close calls where they actually had one. So my suggestion is, we write a letter to DOT, we'll email them tonight, I think they're expecting it, and that we want live maintenance of traffic during business hours on Highway ninety-eight until they finish that job. It's drug out, that red light is not working, we need live human beings that can get that traffic flowing faster. There's no reason for it to take thirty minutes to get through that traffic jam during the daytime hours, and that's what it's taking. And again, it's drug out, there's no way to bypass it. It would've been just as bad there at the Methodist Church had they not been able to, locals at least knew how to bypass the deal and go down Monument. There's no way to bypass it based on where it's at. But we need, we need a human flag or stop sign twirler, whatever you wanna call it, to handle that during the daytime. And again, at night, your traffic's a lot slower and they're not working, but that's gonna be a major problem if we don't get that solved.
If I could, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mike, also including that, they left that road at DeCay over the weekend in terrible shape. I mean, it would be, you would just about beat the full board out of a car. And I went out there Sunday, Mark, I called Mark, and I'm talking about terrible shape and there's no sense, and, you know, I can understand if we had some rain or something, but it, no rain and it was awful.
We rode it Monday morning, I was out there the day. They actually had, they actually got stopped three times coming back. They had live folks on two of the stations and then that blank red light on the other. At least it's a shorter section there, so the wait's ten minutes, not thirty minutes. But yes, we'll include that as well.
Alright, we need a motion. Need a motion, send a letter?
Yes, sir.
DOT, alright. Motion by Commissioner Crone. Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion on this?
Yes, sir.
There's no way they could make a bypass area, is there? If they would shorten up the carpet country end, then you could bypass part of it.
They've got Whiting blocked, I think that's the last road, they've got it blocked where you can't go around that. It probably wouldn't be good, just because that bridge is extremely narrow, that railcar bridge that goes over there between Whiting and the old school, it'd be possible for local traffic. But I don't know if we would want, yeah, you wouldn't be able to, it wouldn't be safe to divert eighteen-wheelers and dump trucks and all down that road, I would say.
Problem, I mean, the problem, the red light, it's just, it's too long. Is that...
It is. I think that's the problem. You need, I mean, a human has got common sense to be able to tell when it's backing up to the top of the Highland View Bridge, you need to let the traffic go. And again, it needs to be a shorter distance, the stoppage area, and it needs to be, we just need the human element to make common sense. And that's bad enough that we've blocked, but if you block on a flat straightaway that goes back towards St. John Beach is one thing, when you're blocked, it's over a mile from that red light to the top of the Highland View Bridge. So you have to think about how much traffic has to back up when it, and again, when you don't have the site and you've got forty-five mile an hour traffic coming to the top of the bridge and somebody's right there, that's where we've had these near misses and then had this rear end. So that's what I'd suggest, that you don't let it back up two miles before you let the traffic through.
And it's creating a problem in town. I mean, the traffic in town, realize, you know, some days, and it's even gonna get worse with spring break, whether it's next week, I mean, it's gonna be...
It, yeah, it's a disaster. And again, till they get it flowing, it's not gonna be perfect, but at least with the human element, they can make it flow a lot quicker than that red light. I talked to a road contractor yesterday, the day before, and he said, "I'd never use it because there's just too many things that could go wrong." I mean, it's sensors and it's timing, but, you know, so...
Yes, yeah, the people in Highland View don't like it. They can't get on the road.
Alright, any other questions? I see I got a motion by Commissioner Crone, second by Commissioner Rich. Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh.
Next thing on this road issue, we need to send a letter to DOT requesting they resurface Country Club Road, they've done the patching, that road is in bad shape, and we need to hold our feet to the fire for the entire thing.
Alright, I entertain a motion. So moved, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Commissioner Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDane. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh.
The last thing is, countywide, city, county, north end, south end, these debris haulers have done tremendous damage to secondary roads. Sides cracked and every time they let the braces down on those trucks, it's done damage to the road. So if we could let the county Public Works do an inventory, we'll turn it in on FEMA, probably not gonna get funded, but if it does not, we could always roll this to the future of CDBG money, that we're gonna need to do a massive road paving countywide on these secondary roads that are not used to this heavy traffic for all this stuff.
Alright, include the patching of the alleys in that too, because they be going out and they got some holes in the alleys also.
It's countywide, citywide, it is, and it's gonna be our problem going forward in the future.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Alright, motion by Commissioner Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh. That's it, sir?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thanks, sir. You still have the floor, sir?
Home number D.
Yes, sir.
Marvin Avenue Property Acquisition. This is a proposed contract from Ms. Barbara Whitfield. I guess it come up about six weeks ago, like Commissioner Crone spoke to me about potentially purchasing this. This is two lots on the corner of Tenth and Marvin, which is but, the Tenth Street Ballpark would be a perfect parking area for that facility. And we got a proposed contract in front of you from Ms. Whitfield. I think it is very much in line, in line with what the property praiser has the property assessed for. She's lived there for, I don't know, thirty or forty years, and the home was destroyed during the storm. It's since been removed, so it's just two vacant lots now.
Okay, alright. Alright, any questions for Mr. Hammond on this, Commissioners?
Good, Mr. Hammond.
Yes, sir.
I think it'd just be a good addition, we've needed some parking down on Tenth Street for years. It's a miracle a child hadn't been run over, you know, stepping out from behind a car. So I think it's a, you know, just a good addition to that park.
Had some discussions with the city and got a commitment from them, this is but, I believe it's Willie Ramsey's house, but they would build a privacy fence between, I guess on the east side of this property. And then as we were able to, maybe when we get some of this crushed concrete, we can dress up the parking lot and whatnot, but for right now, we would just buy this out of fifth penny, TDC money.
Okay, alright.
As my recommendation.
Alright, thanks, sir. I just want to add, we've been parking in Ms. Whitfield yard for years, you know, parking on the side, parking in the front, you know, so, and to me, it just makes sense, so, because we're gonna use, I mean, we've been using her property anyway, so we might as well go ahead on and purchase it so we can use it illegally, so. I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Crone. Second by Mr. Rich. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public?
If you could include in your motion to allow me to sign the contract and to close the property.
Alright. Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Mayor, Mayor, you gonna say something?
I will say, I will say...
Come on up, come on up.
I'm down in Susan, the speed has to go even faster.
Okay, alright.
I'm coming down, you want me to do this?
Come on, yeah, come on up, come on up.
Yeah, I just don't like to see you. Hey, y'all buddy?
Yeah.
Uh, they got him.
Yes, sir.
Both Patterson Mayor, this great city of Fort St. Joe. You know, we're talking about our youth, our future leaders. For years and years and years, families have enjoyed going down the Tenth Street and playing ball. I see several of you on the board, y'all play ball down there, and it must be special when your kids play down there. You know, you got something in common. You tell your kid, "I played on this field." Kid gets, you know, all proud, "My dad played on this field." And so I think it's a great move. Our kids need a safe, enjoyable place to play, and I can guarantee you, if this thing was moved out to the sports complex, Little League Baseball would die within two years. Our kids won't go out there, their parents won't take them out there, they'll come to down to Tenth Street, essentially located. It makes great sense. We've come up with a plan, we had residents didn't like the first set of plans, well, we have brought those plans down six different times. And now we're only talking about adding one ball field when it's all done to the girl sides, couple press boxes, couple batting cages. And to say that we haven't listened to the public on this, I say we have. You just look at where we started and where we're at now. So I hope you guys will vote for this, but like I say, it's for our youth and they deserve a safe place to play. Thank you very much.
Alright, thanks, sir. Alright, anyone else in the public on this? Anyone else in the public? Appreciate that, Mayor. Alright, any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh. Yes, sir. Mr. Novak?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good afternoon. The last item is E, Stonewall Creek Fire Department. As you know, you recently selected a new vendor to assemble that in six different items. We negotiated a contract, it's been executed, it's now part of the record. There's two items, the acquisition of the concrete and also the building itself. For the county to do direct purchase orders and suspend your procurement policy, we would ask you for a vote to authorize us to do that so we can submit it to the state for the grant purposes. Obviously, we need the materials, time is of the essence, the hurricane delayed us, we're now at the ability to put it all together. But Sherry has, I think, the structure for both of the direct purchase orders, but it's for the concrete and actually steel building. Sherry, you wanna add to that?
Yes, the first request is for the county's purchase of the metal building. It's from Big B Steel Building in the amount of forty-five, nine eighty-six. This is requested with an exemption to the bidding requirement as an exceptional purchase. The exemption is being requested due to the immediate availability of the building, that, immediate availability of the material as ordered by the initially awarded contractor. So that is just for the building portion of it.
Okay. Need a motion to approve? Need a motion.
If we can do them separately, just for structural purposes?
Alright, I entertain a motion. So moved. Motion by Commissioner McDane.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion on this? Alright, anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh.
The second part of that would be for a change order with the Fisher Construction Contract for the direct purchase of the concrete and the roll-up doors. The concrete estimated amount is twenty-five thousand, the roll-up doors at ten thousand eight hundred. This will save on sales tax and revise Fisher's contract to a net amount of one twenty-five nine fifty-nine. And we just ask that if Mr. Hammond be able to execute this change order and direct purchase order and any future ones on this project.
Alright, sounds good. So moved, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Commissioner McDane.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion?
Is Fisher doing the concrete himself?
I don't know if he's setting it out, probably he'll let her... He can do both ways, my understanding, because Mr. David Watson, he's...
Go ahead, Brad.
Hey, yeah, there you go. Come on.
He has, uh... Come over here.
Come on here and get on TV.
Speaking with Mr. Fisher, the contractor, he has quoted both ways of soda out and building himself. He don't know which way he's gonna go due to the workload of the person that he's contacted.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Alright. Any... Where's the bill?
Sitting on, uh, at the Fisher, uh, wait a minute.
You sent a state of Florida in the county, good.
Yep. Good deal.
Alright, thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you. Alright, we got a motion by Commissioner McDane, second by Commissioner Rich. All right, we got a motion by Commissioner McDaniels, second by Commissioner Rich. Any, anyone else in the public on this? Anyone in the public on this? All right, any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, my catch-all administrative reports got left off. It's my fault. It was on my original amendment when it got sent to Clerk Norris. Then it got on there and it's my fault. But I've got two other things, uh. One, we need a letter of recommendation.
Ben, what, what is exactly the name of the group for Lee County? Thank you, okay.
It's Helping Hands. Uh, it's one of the groups that helped us, uh, after the storm. So we just nicked a letter from the chairman, uh, recommended them for the tornado relief in Lee County, Alabama.
Okay, I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers. Second. Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion on sending this letter? We appreciate it. All right, uh, any, uh, anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh.
Last thing I have is several of you have, have asked me to, uh, inquire on an extension, another extension. Uh, I, I do believe that FEMA and, uh, Florida Emergency Management would, would grant that, but I do not believe that DOT is going to grant that, and I wouldn't recommend that us going forward with that if they did not continue to pick up that contract. Uh, I understand Jackson County and the city of Marianna, uh, have, have a letter out and, and they're wanting us to potentially ask DOT at the same time. Uh, I'd just like to know what your pleasure is if, if we want to ask a formal, uh, request for an extension. Understanding that it would have to be both FEMA and DOT approved, uh, for me to recommend us doing it. Just one of the wishes of the board.
Okay, all right. I, I, I just said, I, I think, I mean, it won't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt. And to put it just to ask, you know, I mean, if they tell us no, then they tell us no, but at least we try. Uh, so I would say, yes. With the understanding of what you said.
Yes, sir.
If both, both approve it, then we go forward.
You get, uh, Mr. Turner to draft us a letter requesting both, fully funded.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion by Commissioner McCrone.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rogers.
Any kind of timeline on extension? Is it asked for? What we can get?
I, I, again, I would, I would say anything we got would be a benefit. If we got another thirty days, that would be a good deal.
Ask for ninety, ask for ninety-three months.
Okay, we will.
All right, so I got a motion by Commissioner McCrone, second by Commissioner Rogers, that we, uh, asked for the extension.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Can, can I, um, I just may not understand. I may have missed something. Is that extension for the debris? Did you pick up? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, barring an extension Friday.
Friday's the deadline.
Will be the deadline to put stuff out in October the, excuse me, April the fifteenth will be the last day that they will be picking up per their statement. So I mean, that's, and I don't necessarily, even though I thought in the past it might be a very hard task, uh, I, I think that's certainly a doable thing. Now, the haul off out of the county will not be finished by that time, but they're working on that pretty steadily too, so.
Right, right. So hopefully, uh, I mean, like I say, you never know if, if it doesn't, if we do, do not get an extension. I mean, everybody pretty much knows by now that March fifteenth is, that's it.
That's it.
And I've been seeing a lot of people working, so trying to get everything they can to the, to the edge of the road.
It's come a long way in a couple months, no doubt.
Yeah. All right, any, uh, any, uh, any further board discussion on this? All right, any, uh, anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right, any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh. All right, any Commissioners got anything before we?
Not here.
We got.
Uh, just for information only, you, as most of you know, we have this special election coming up here. I think the primaries in April and the general is sometime in June. I've been monitoring this along with Mr. Hammond. He called me a couple of hours ago, said the, uh, Division of Elections of the State of Florida, the letters on the way that we can use the two super precincts. So the election will be, you can early vote, after-stay vote, or vote at large, either in Fort St. Joe at the, uh, supervisor elections office up and we will hit it at the library. So it'll be just like this past November general election, eh? He said he got the green light today and I asked him, I said, can I bring it up in this meeting? He said, absolutely, so. That's it. Save us a lot of money, good people.
And you can vote in any place. It don't matter.
Yeah, you can vote anywhere. You can vote. We walk to St. Joe, wherever you at, you vote. You can vote one time.
Did he, did he say anything about the, the, the picking up the tab or are we still out to forty-five thousand?
They're going to pick it up.
They're going to.
It's going to be two or three years. Couple of years down the road.
Yeah, I'm not going to say that. I don't.
We, we, we had, we asked Senator Mumford to, to speed up the process, you know, returning the money to the counties. And he said he would look into it for us.
That's all I had, just information.
Okay, I appreciate it. Any other Commissioners got anything?
Uh, I just got one thing I wanted to add. Um, and I, I had a good conversation with Mark about the alleys. We just want to make sure we still, make sure to mention that and get down those alleys. And I, and I, I don't know if anybody else been noticing, but those lines that are, I still been seeing a lot of lines. I don't know if they're MediaCom lines or who lines they are, but they ain't picking, they ain't coming by the, they put new lines up, but still got lines sagging, still on the ground, rolled all, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, are they going to come back and get them? They hadn't came back and got them, so I don't know who lines they belong to. We need to make a phone call to MediaCom and tell them, hey, they need to send workers back out to grab those lines, because they, I mean, I see lines everywhere. And I, I don't know how, I mean, we, we need to get, they need to send somebody out to get them picked up or cut them down or something. Yeah, because they still, I mean, some still dipping down.
We can make contact.
Come on up, Mayor. You got something on that? And MediaCom had told them they'd be starting picking that wire up this week if it was theirs. And then down, down here on Tenth Street in front of his office house, they had wires coming down and they had to put some pieces of wood on it to hold it down so you could cross the roadway. And it went back up. Well, we got that handled. She called me. I said, you, you called the right person, lady. And, uh, we got that handled, but I, I've been talking with Jim and he said he did finally get a good contact number for MediaCom. And, uh, he's already talked to Consolidated and also to Duke Energy. So hopefully they'll be getting them picked up in the next few days. If not, we're going to really raise some sand coming next meeting of the city.
All right.
Yeah, I, I don't think it, I think there's a lot of, they either going to be.
Mr. Chairman, there on the other end too.
On the other end.
I was with, uh, Mr. Wood this morning going over some areas. And, uh, there's rows of wire. I couldn't tell you if it's electrical or TV or what, but, I mean, you don't have to go far before you'll find. Exactly what you're talking about, so it's all over the county. That's what, that's what I heard the mayor in an accident he had.
Yeah, there, here it is.
Hazard.
All right. All right, any, uh, anything else before we get out?
Mark, uh, I got one, one thing, uh, Mr. Chairman. Did we find any shale for, I mean, you talked about painted pony down there, because we.
Called another contact this afternoon. He said that, uh, he said a thirty-yard dump truck away yesterday was his last that he had. But it's a contract that he had, can't sell until he has, uh, the picture. And we got one guy that said he calls next week.
Okay. Okay, careful.
That's all. Another thing that you asked about, Commissioner McCrone, about the, the log operation, we might want to, after our next meeting, go through that. Uh, Place Morrow would let us know this morning that, uh, GAC has mobilized on the, uh, on the mill site for construction improvements. And they're out, going back out for bid on the, uh, on the building.
Will, will that be our next meeting on the building or any other?
I don't know if we're taking them that day or not, but, but as quick, as quickly as possible.
Okay.
All right, that's it. All right, take this opportunity. Thank you everyone for coming out. I entertain a motion that we had, Chairman.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Commissioner Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich. No opposition. Motion passes five and oh.